Mayor Protim and Commissioners, in your packet this evening we have Budget Adjustment Request Number Four. This entire request pertains to the fire fund. So you'll see I've broken it out for you that we're requesting an adjustment to adjust our revenues to account for additional awards that we received this year. There's also in your packet a copy of the letter from the State Fire Marshal's Office. Chief Matthews was awarded an additional $96,000 that will be put towards the new fire station. So we're incorporating that. And then you'll also see that at the beginning of the fiscal year, we actually showed a carryover and we didn't allocate all of the funds. Because I think at the time we were doing the budget, we weren't real sure with regards to the budget for the new fire stations. I've met with the fire chief and so we will be allocating the additional $96,000 plus the carryover that we had as of July 1st. And then we'll also adjust it to reflect the actual annual amount that we received for the fire fund this year, which was $15,734 more than what we budgeted. So hopefully with these adjustments, we can kind of clean all of that up. And then we're actually allocating all of the funds towards the new fire station and some equipment, maintenance, and repair. So in the summary that I've provided for you below, it shows that we're anticipating utilizing all of those funds in this legislature. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? At this time, thank you, Michael Ann. At this time, Ms. Berry, if you have no other comments, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2014-40.
We'll make that motion to approve Resolution 2014-40.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Trish, let's have a roll call on this, please.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
May I have your time spoken?
Yes. Resolution passes. Item D, deliberate enact on Resolution 2014-41, grant agreement for extension of cooperative agreement number SP414908 with the New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commissioners, this is in regard to a cooperative agreement existing with New Mexico DOT for street improvements. The expiration date of this would be December 31st of 2014. And so we are, the resolution would ask for an extension from NMDOT. That is not uncommon with these kind of grants because the environmental assessment process become rather lengthy getting through DOT. However, I would like to point out that under item I, we will give you a more detailed report on all of our ongoing street and drainage improvements and the grants that go along with those.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Are there any questions or comments for Mr. Berry? Okay, at this time, then I would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2014-41.
Mayor Protim, I make a motion to accept the Resolution Number 2014-41.
All right, we have a motion. Second, and we have a second. Trish, let's do a roll call on this as well since it's a resolution.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
May I have your time spoken?
Yes. Resolution passes. Item E, deliberate enact on selection of firm to update and amend the Raton Main Street downtown master plan. Ms. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commissioners, the City of Raton is partnering with Raton Main Street to update the downtown master plan. I would like to call on Diana Sanchez to address the Commission, and she will give us all the particulars. Evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to let you know, as you all know, we have a downtown master plan. It is for an update. And Raton Main Street has secured funds of $45,000 to hire a firm to do the update to the master plan. Some of the things in that are trying to get an MRA designation, which is a metropolitan re-designation of our area, redevelopment. What that'll do is it'll help preserve the integrity of our downtown structures. That'll be put there. You know, it won't allow metal buildings to be built in the middle of the historic districts like that. In addition to some other things, we had two firms reply to the RFP that was issued. We had a committee that analyzed each of them. And we were unanimous in selecting sites Southwest. And so we went into the commission that we proceed with the procurement process of hiring them. We have until August of 2015 to get it done and spend the funds. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Sanchez?
I would add that Raton Main Street did meet last week and they voted on their recommendation to approve the award to Site Southwest LLC. It would also take approval of the commission and ultimately the contract. Once approved, there would be a negotiation with Raton Main Street and City of Raton and the successful firm. And following that negotiation, a contract for professional services would come back to the commission.
So basically tonight, we're just giving you the approval to go ahead and notify Site Southwest LLC that they were the successful bidder and we'll proceed from there.
And they will leave the contract.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll take that motion.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item F, deliberate enact on Resolution 2014-39. This is a resolution to dedicate the name Veterans Park to the area otherwise known as Pesavento Park to give it an official name. Mr. Chavez, did you want to carry the ball on this?
I'll take this one. Thank you.
You bet.
Let me read this. The Resolution 2014-39, whereas an area across the street from Legion Park is a small piece of land known to the public as Pesavento Park, and whereas the land has never been given an official name by the City of Raton, and whereas on Tuesday, tomorrow, November 11th, 2014, the official dedication of the Raton Veterans Memorial will take place on this property, and whereas the City of Raton is officiating the site to be further known as Veterans Park. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City of Raton has officially given the name of Veterans Park to the site where the Veterans Memorial will be constructed.
And if you all have not been by there yet, it looks pretty good. So I have to give kudos to Mr. Chavez for kind of spearheading that with his group and...
It's been a good deal and it's looking up really nice. Weather providing tomorrow, we should have maybe 8,000 or 10,000 veterans from the area, providing the weather's good. In reality, the veterans will be there. We have local veterans that'll be raising the flags of the branches of the service. We'll dedicate the first stone in the brick patio that's in front of the memorial. And that one states that this memorial was dedicated on this date. And raise the flags, and then we'll all retire to the museum for all of honor.
What time does that start?
It's 11 minutes after 11:00.
11 minutes after 11:00.
11:11:11.
11:11:11. All right. Is there any more comments, discussion? Then I would make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2014-39. Do we have a second?
I'll take that motion.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item G, discussion of January 20th legislative priorities. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Protim and Commissioners, the Legislature will convene, I believe, on January 20th for a 60-day session. So between then and now, we did want to initiate conversation with the Commission about setting our priorities and requests for capital outlay. I would tell the Commission that requests for capital outlay should track fairly closely with the existing infrastructure capital improvement plan that was adopted earlier in the year by the Commission. You have a copy of that plan that does prioritize the city's capital improvement needs. It gives you some budget numbers over five years and out from that. This was submitted to the Department of Finance Administration. They share that with various agencies such as the Environment Department, the State Engineers' Office, or DOT in order to analyze these potential requests. So that process is going on now. But we would like to initiate that conversation at this time by going to anticipate action where the Commission will formally vote on legislative priorities. But it's something that we could discuss, a follow-up to our Saturday workshop where capital improvements was one of the priorities of the Commission. So we could talk about specifics, do whatever you need to here, but we would refer you to the ICIP.
Any questions for Mr. Berry?
No, I had to have Mr. Phillips explain the total ICIP project today and the projects that we talked about during the workshop and the priorities of the city are all in line here, so.
There's really no action to be taken on this matter here. It does kind of roll into item number H, discussion of the ICIP capital outlay request. If you want to just continue there, Mr. Berry?
That's correct. Mayor Protim and Commissioner, you can see that what we've listed as the top priority on the ICIP is a transfer station or a combination recycle center. We did have Mr. Lewandowski discuss with the Commission and the public the proposal to construct the new facility. We would estimate that we would need $1.2 million to construct that, and about half a million of that would be city funds. So we anticipate a request of $500,000 to $700,000 of the Legislature in capital outlay. Then going down the list just real quickly, on Lake Malloya, we do anticipate dam safety improvements. There are a couple of issues that have been talked about extensively at Water Board meetings, primarily Phase One is rehab of outlet conduits that exist in the dam, pipes through the dam that are, portions of which are 100 years old. And one of those does have a sign of failure currently, so we're looking at inspection and rehab of that. That work actually is underway now, at least the engineering design of that. As you go out, the big issue with Lake Malloya is inadequate spillway capacity, and to gain the proper amount of spillway capacity, that's a lot of dollars. So you can see a total that we're estimating over $8 million for Lake Malloya through 2019. So a big need there. We've listed street construction on the list. And really, you could spend as much money as you need on street reconstruction. We have lots of needs, as we discussed at the workshop. We don't have a lot of resources to put towards that. So prioritization of street construction and drainage improvement is what's required. So we show you some numbers there. We could spend a lot more dollars on street reconstruction, but going forward, that's a priority. Also in there, we have the drainage improvements. And because we do a lot of transfers, we are showing a new medical response unit, an ambulance. We put a lot of miles on that unit, and so we're always really heading for replacement of an ambulance. And there's, it's not covered under the fire fund. And then as you go on down the line, we do see multimodal, we see something in there for upgrade to rail lines. We'll talk about that a little more. Upgrade of the water treatment plant, senior center renovations, and you have many things on the list here. So all things we need to spend some time talking about as we update the ICIP. And as we do go through the year and talk about the ICIP, getting the public input is very important on all of these. But what the plan is, is to try to lay out some dollars and set some priorities.
Mr. Berry, is there any discussion or comments?
Getting the public opinion, will that be a special workshop or will it be done at a meeting like this?
We can, we would probably do that at a special public hearing where we could really take some time, an hour or two, and receive that public input. And I really believe we should do that several times through the year, maybe quarterly, and receive that public input at different times in the year. But public input is very important to the process.
I'd just like to point out to the Commission that you do have rather detailed explanations of the top five on the ICIP. So if you are reading through those and have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Berry would be more than happy to answer them. Any other questions or discussion? And there's really no action to be taken on this, this was more of an informational...
We would anticipate action probably at the next meeting, November 25th meeting. Try to ask the Commission to vote on those priorities, formalize them, and give us some time to put together information in advance of the legislative session.
And that would come in form of a resolution?
I believe so.
Any other questions, discussion? All right. Item I, an update from Mr. Jason Phillips on street drainage improvements. Mr. Phillips?
Mayor Protim, Commissioner, you should have a memo with a tabulation of our grants. In summarize, we can say that 2015 is going to be a pretty good year for street reconstruction. In total, we've leveraged $784,955, of which that only $75,747 is city dollars. All of the rest will be coming from the state of New Mexico. First on your list, you have South First Street repaving. Expiration date on that is June of 2015. $281,967 state dollars, no dollars from the City of Raton. It's anticipated that that work will be taking place in September of 2015. We also have a Tiger Drive resurfacing project on that. You'll note the city has $48,346 in it. The state will be contributing $145,038. In addition to that, that's not shown on the column, the Raton Public School System is dedicated to $20,000 co-op Raton fairs to bring that project to fruition. That is also anticipated to be taking place next year. The resolution that you extended earlier this evening, SP414908, is earmarked for Galisteo Avenue between South First Street and South Second Street. Fairly small co-op, $33,735 in state funds, $11,245 to city funds. SP415 is another co-op. That's our current co-op. It's designated for Pecos Avenue between South First Street and South Third Street. If you've been in that area, it's in pretty rough shape. That's going to be a complete reconstruction, whereas most of the other projects will be a mill and resurfacing, including South First Street and Tiger Drive. Galisteo, we're still looking at evaluating whether that surface is worth saving. It may be a reconstruction as well, if we would take three inches of the asphalt pavement completely off and just lay a brand-new mat. At the budget that you've got now, Galisteo is assuming that we can save at least part of that surface. The 2014 capital appropriation project is capital outlay from last year. It's a $200,000 grant with no matching funds required to work on storm drainage and a pertinent street reconstruction. We're anticipating in the Park Avenue, Cook, Rio Grande areas of town that we do video inspection of those storm drainage systems. We anticipate probably rebuilding some of the drop fill-in structures as well as reconstructing some of the tram's worst lines that run towards the main. Hope on that is that our main lines are in good enough condition where if we do some rehabilitation, we can stretch those funds. Significant way to make that $200,000 go as far as possible. With a project like that, we're going to be digging down to replace some sections of the storm drain line. So we would anticipate that we would bring that branch back up and probably overlay certain sections of that street in order to get through that. As you know, South First Street is getting ready to be retrofitted with a new water line. Existing lines over 100 years old. So we'll hold off until that project's complete before we look at resurfacing that street as well. But it looks to be probably our busiest year in the last five to six years as far as street construction. And I think realistically, all of those can be completed in 2015.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion for Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, Mr. Phillips on Galisteo and Pecos, is there any water lines in those areas going down South First Street?
There are, but in those areas, they're typically served behind curb with a two-inch line. South Second Street during the reconstruction, stubbed out. A lot of work that provides service to everything on that side of it. As part of the South First Street project, there are some stub outs for future use, but nothing that we would anticipate would stop us from paving those new streets.
Thank you.
The work that's been undergoing on Park Cabinet, the 200 blocks, is that completed at this time or is it still?
Commissioner, I'll give you a report on that.
Okay. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Item G, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I did hand you a... A report, and it's a copyrighted report from the Associated Press. Sorry.
That's right.
I'm up on that one. And it, I'm going to read the first paragraph there. "A new state commission report concludes New Mexico will suffer economic losses of about $3 million annually if Amtrak halted passenger service along its current route and shifted it to another rail line." And it is pointing out that it's, there is a cost if Amtrak did go to the other line, the Clovis Line, there would be a cost. It would probably be prohibitive and may affect Amtrak service going through New Mexico at all. But they do document there would be $3 million cost. I believe what New Mexico shares is looking at something in the $4 million annually range. So if you have economic losses of $3 million, it's probably easier for the state of New Mexico to see investing that money in the rail line. But you have the information there on that. That's a report that looks like it was published on November 6th. Okay, Commissioners, here we do see a couple of photos I brought you on the Park Avenue drainage project. And what you see going on here is we removed curb and gutter in that downtown half a block. We installed the corrugated metal pipe that's at the bottom middle of the picture is the new storm drain line. That is approximately four times the capacity of the storm drain line that was in there that we replaced. We removed sidewalk. Most of that's been replaced now. Construction will be complete on this project this week. And I have a couple more photos on that. So there you see sidewalk being put in. The curb and gutter is in place. At the alley, you'll note that there are a lot of underground utilities. And what is right at the bottom there is a large gas line. So that's tough to work around. We did have to change some of our plumbing on this because of that gas line. The manhole, the brick manhole that you see on the left part of the picture, that has got very large duct related to communications there. So a lot of utilities in place. And I have one more. There's Jason. That's looking up the alley. So we have two storm drain inlets on the project. This has all been replaced and concrete's been poured. And if you see it now, it's got blankets over the new concrete. So that project will be finished up this week. And that's what I have on that one. This is the WPA channel crossing on North First Street. And the background there is Plaza Supermarket. So that wall was constructed and completed this week. That replaces a handrail that was in a dangerous situation. So on the other side of the wall is the channel, probably more than 10 or 12 feet drop there. So that was installed for safety purposes. But that has just recently been completed. These are roll-off containers that were recently purchased. We received four 40-yard roll-off containers, so we have those in place now. We'll use those at the existing convenience center and at the new convenience center. So four of those. What you see there are three yard, three cubic yard dumpsters. Those are the new dumpsters that are being placed around town. We did put 36 out previously. We received 36 today, and we received another 36 on Wednesday. So we have a total of 108. Citywide, we estimate there are 1,084 containers out there. So this would replace about one-tenth of the containers. This is what we have budgeted for the year. So if we continued at that pace, we'd replace all the containers in about 10 years. That's the new containers that are being placed out there. As far as the Public Works Department, they've been working on the City of Bethlehem. We had extensive drainage-related issues on the City of Bethlehem, so they've been up there over about the past week trying to get, prepare that for Christmas time. But we had extensive erosion throughout that, so they're cleaning that up, placing some drainage structures. Because we've had good weather, they've also tried to use the good weather to continue patching, asphalt patching on streets, catching utility cuts and potholes. We'll do that as long as we have the good weather, we have a little bit of material to work with. When it gets cold, it's not really very effective, but we do want to complete as much as we can before we get into cold weather. Then after we get into cold weather, the crews will start to rework some alleys. So we did complete the crushed concrete project. Our crews would go load that crushed concrete, haul it to alleys, and blade that in. And we do have some alleys that are badly eroded from past storms over really the past two or three years. So we'll start to rehabilitate those alleys during the cold months. Currently, we have asked for applications and qualifications for the position of police chief. That's in a number of publications, and we anticipate closing those applications on December 6th and starting the selection process. Last week, we did receive sealed bids for the First Street water line replacement bid. That bid goes to the Raton Water Board. They will be looking at that, I think at their November 18th meeting. We did receive three bids. The low bid is KR Swerfiger, a company from Pueblo, Colorado, and it was a favorable bid. So we do anticipate award of that. If it's awarded, the work could start around the first of the year and be complete by spring, and then we would start the street surfacing, as Jason had said. If the weather is not favorable, we could take a winter shutdown and start the project when it does warm up. So that's out there. Last week, I did travel to Santa Fe and I met with the Cabinet Secretary of the New Mexico Environment Department, Ryan Flynn. We spent about an hour and a half talking to Mr. Flynn about general issues with the City of Raton. But Mr. Flynn's relatively new on the job, so to make contact with him, we did talk about issues such as the TMDL rule that's being talked about right now. It would apply to discharges out of our wastewater treatment plant. We also talked about issues regarding solid waste in Raton. We, as Michael Ann had said, we did receive notice this week, or actually it was the end of last week, that we did receive $96,000 from the New Mexico Fire Protection Grant Council, and that is specified for fire station facility improvements. So we do anticipate primarily putting that into energy efficiency measures at our new addition on the south end of town. on the south end of town. And I have one other item. The governor did announce, uh, funding through the River stewards initiative. That was announced, I believe, of October twenty-second. And under that announcement, Raton will receive a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rehabilitate Seagrim Creek. Seagrim Creek was affected during the track fire. It's one of the, uh, remaining items that, uh, needs to, needs some attention in the watershed. So, um, I believe that work again would go through Raton Water Works and the Raton, uh, Water Board. And it's scheduled to be completed, uh, next summer. We, by the way, we would provide twenty-five thousand dollars in matching funds to that grant.
Before we be done with that channel, is it called, uh, River Rapids and stuff like that?
Yeah, Commissioner, the, uh, issue with, uh, Seagrim Creek is, uh, it is, uh, in a highly erodible situation now. It is eroding quite a bit since the, since the track fire. So there would be, uh, a rock, uh, place to resist erosion. There would be some realignment of the channel. There would be some other materials, including some of the burnt wood up there, uh, to try to rehabilitate Seagrim Creek. And the goal is to, uh, help it out while we kind of evolve to more of a natural stream. And in the natural stream, uh, beavers will help quite a bit. There will be some kind of natural grade control. And, uh, on some of the other streams out there, we see a lot of beaver activity, but in this highly eroded section, we don't see any. So it's to try to promote that, that natural erosion protection going forward. Uh, by the way, that, that eroded section runs right into Lake Malloya. And we have seen some water quality issues at times that where we get big storms up there and we do see that erosion. So that would, uh, really improve water quality in Lake Malloya. Uh, I have one other item. Mr. Campbell from Raton Water Works has participated or been participating in the Colfax County Regional Water Plan Steering Committee. So the regional water plan, uh, is, uh, is going forward now. It's something that's updated periodically and, uh, Mr. Campbell will represent the city of Raton in that effort. That's all I have for my work.
Any other comments?
Uh, on the, uh, bear-resistant dumpsters, the ones that I've personally been cleaning up that have the new thing, I'm not cleaning it up anymore. So it's working on, on some of the bears, but I've seen a couple of others where they might have figured it out. But the majority that I've seen, they're keeping the bears out of it.
Yeah, Mr. Barry, on the U-pipe that was put in, uh, Park Avenue, does that go completed down to Park Avenue? Is it to First Street or?
Well, uh, Commissioner, it goes from the alley between Second and Third and it ties into an existing storm drain at Second Street. Uh, the, uh, the capital outlay storm drainage, uh, money that we talked about, that would fund, uh, the next phase to storm drain improvements on Cook Park and other, uh, downtown areas.
I just have one question. I, I missed most of the presentation last meeting for the ways. Are, are we looking at, uh, possibly reducing the number of dumpsters in town?
We intend to target a twenty-five percent reduction in the number of containers on the street. So rather than replacing a thousand, we'd anticipate that we have probably more like eight hundred solid waste dumpsters for part of the plan going forward if we convert some of those containers into sizable containers. So we'd still have the same number, just in the difference.
Sure. Okay. I have no other questions from Mr. Barry. Anybody else? Is there any other business to come before this commission this, this evening? That, with that, I will adjourn this meeting. I'll adjourn. Thank you.